...one point zero seven two of the Texas Government Code regarding property struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale held on July eleven, twenty seventeen. Executive Item B, consultation with attorney pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Next, we have Executive Item C, consultation with attorney pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter.
Mayor, I move to go into Executive Session.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
At our meeting, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Texas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas law, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And Lord, for the, all of those that were killed or wounded in Las Vegas, we ask you to bring healing, comfort to families. And Lord, as a nation, we ask you for forgiveness for taking prayer and Bible reading out of schools that brought us down this path. And Lord, here today, I ask you to cause each of us to humbly look into our own hearts and find those things that we need to ask you for forgiveness for, and help us to find forgiveness for each other at the same time. Help us to operate in love, and for this meeting today, we ask you to help us to do what's right for the city of Brownsville and for each other, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
We will now continue with action on items discussed in Executive Session. Action for Executive A, discussion and possible action on resolution numbers twenty seventeen dash zero fifty-five through resolutions number twenty seventeen dash zero sixty, approving or rejecting the bid offers received on the tax resale properties on July eleven, twenty seventeen, as listed on the City Commission Agenda.
An action item, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Action Item A from Executive Session.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will not have an action on Executive Session B, but we do have an action on Executive C, action to proceed as advised by attorney in Executive Session.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor's Activity Update?
Yes, I'd like to address the audience and also the TV audience. I think we'd be remiss in not remarking about the things that are presently concerning our, our community and the issues that are being brought forth. However, like Brad talked to us about, the tragedy that occurred in Las Vegas is something that is even more so troubling when you're talking about the health and the well, I mean the safety, the, the loss of life, and, and we have to remember those families and those friends that were affected by that tragedy. And so it's with that in mind that my remarks are made this evening because I believe we have to put everything in perspective, we have to move forward in unity and with respect for one another. So I ask each and every one of you tonight who is listening, and I thank everybody for being here, that we need to call on our own better angels for the well-being of Brownsville, for the well-being of our friends and our families, and as Brad talked about, the things that we must address, and that is ourselves, our community, and how do we go forward with love and respect and unity for the entire family of Brownsville. So I would wish that you all would keep that in mind as we go forward this evening.
If I may, Mayor.
Next, we have, next, we have Commissioner's Activity Update.
If I may, friends, family, neighbors, I would like to reiterate my deepest apologies for the language I used in the audio recordings that have been circulating the last couple of weeks. I profoundly regret my choice of words, and I am sincerely apologetic for having used the language I did. I know I hurt my constituents and have disappointed in my friends, family, but most of all, myself. I do not condone racism, nor do I practice it. I have actively worked against its promulgation in my personal, professional, and political life. I made a terrible mistake, but please believe I still stand against injustice, unfair and unlawful treatment of any American regardless of race, religion, age, or social standing. I spoke from a heated and frustrated frame of mind and allowed my temper to speak for me in a moment of weakness. To that end, I sincerely ask for the public's forgiveness. To my community, I apologize the negative attention these words have drawn to our city. And it pains to see me, our home, being misrepresented because of these words. When I ran for office, I made a promise to my community that I would work hard to buck the established trends of corruption and the under-the-table deals that long have plagued our beautiful city. The compadresgo has diverged valuable resources away from those who need it most, and it has marred our reputation as a forward-thinking community. Despite the shame that comes from this incident, I will not stop honoring my commitment to the people of Brownsville, nor will I back down in my fight for our great community. Please, let us not lose sight of our mission as a community and look instead forward to rebuilding our future together. Let us not allow further divisiveness to creep into our ranks and maintain the broken status quo which has plagued us for so long. Today, I make a renewed commitment to my community to learn from this terrible mistake and fight harder for progress, unity, and the future of our children. We must continue forward in our fight for equality, immigration reform, student debt relief, voting rights, good economic development, and the creation of a community that benefits everyone and not a few. My stance remains, but my regretful words do not. Your friend, neighbor, and Commissioner Sessa. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one, but I'll go last.
Okay. I haven't made a statement up until now because I want to do it in an official proceeding, but I want to emphatically and unequivocally denounce racism, and I emphatically and unequivocally denounce Sessa's choice of language in that situation. And I worked over thirty years as a judge to try to assure equality for our citizens in our municipal court, and I think thousands of citizens who came before me will attest that I treated them equally and with dignity. And I judge these people by their actions and the circumstances and not just by their words. So as a Commissioner, I'm working now for equality of opportunity for everyone in our city, and the root problem of racism is that it denies people the equality of opportunity. And we have been living in a city in which people are being denied equality of opportunity, and the audit report that submitted, going to be submitted tonight, I think proves what I'm talking about. And I don't believe Sessa is a racist, and I don't believe he should resign, and I'm not judging him by his words but by his actions of which he spoke, which he's fought for minorities, he's fought for voters' rights, he's fought with Maldeff, he's fought for DACA, he's done pro bono immigration work, and he's been against the wall and against a sanctuary city's law. He's also diligently represented his clients, and I've seen this for over almost four years, working with him and helping mentoring him, and I think he has high ethics, high morals, and high professionalism. He immediately accepted responsibility and apologized and did it again tonight. So I ask you to judge him not by his actions, by his actions, but not by his poor choice of words. So that night, I believe Sessa had a choice that he had to make to either be corrupt or to be honest, and he chose to be honest, and look at the price he's paid so far. Seeing this kind of support is very heartening to be able to continue our fight here, and I want him, I stand up for him tonight, and I want him to stay with me and help to fight to make our city a better place. And it is a fight, and you can see the results. So that's all I want to say about my friend, Commissioner DeLeon.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
No.
Do you have someone?
I think all of it, the rest of us all gave statements before. Okay. Can we go on to the next one? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So eleven years ago today, I sat in a hospital bed after giving birth to my first-born child, my son, the light of my life, the apple of my eye, my Andrew Khalifa. Today is his birthday. He's at home with a few friends, and he understood that his mom had to, to be there for her city. She made a commitment, and he understood that, that, that his mom had to see through to make sure that his city was somewhere where he could grow up and be somebody. So I love you, Andrew, happy birthday, and echoing that sentiment, I just-
Tonight, I'm going to say happy birthday to Andrew as well. Okay. And I wish everybody would say happy birthday to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to, to echo the sentiment that the world that we leave, the work that we do today, the, the pain that we go through, the sacrifices we make today are for a better tomorrow, are for the people that we raise and leave in this world and set the example for every day. And so often, I log on to Facebook to post pictures of my kids, to share my day, how my thoughts went, the things happening at the city, the positive things happening, and I see a lot of hate, I see a lot of really mean comments, really mean-spirited things, and it makes me hurt. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make me angry, it's hurtful. So I just want to remind everybody that the example we set today, that the words that come out of our mouths, that the, the legacy that we leave behind is so much more valuable than a tiff to, to tell somebody off, to, 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 to make somebody feel short for a second so you can feel better. We are so much better than that, and our city is so beautiful. We are the light that makes our city the most brightest place, the most beautiful place, and I just want to remind everybody to talk to your kids and remind them that we are the good in the world, and just because somebody else says something mean or just because somebody else does something that's, that's offensive, it doesn't mean that we have to do it. It means that we stand tall and remind people that this world is good because we make it good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, next item?
Next item, we have presentations. At this time, I need to advise you that we will have that presentation at the next City Commission meeting.
Very good.
So we, we will go on to Consent Agenda Items A through K.
So move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Public Hearings, Public Hearing Number Five, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number twenty seventeen dash sixteen thirty-two, approving negotiating Texas gas service rates for twenty seventeen dash twenty eighteen.
Commissioners, Mayor, this is the ordinance that we discussed adopting the unanimous settlement agreement, which was increasing the rates and establishing tariffs by Texas Gas Service in the city of Brownsville. Accepting-
This is a public hearing. Anybody have any comments on this issue? And this is a, I need a motion to approve, if no one's got a-
Motion to approve?
We have to close public hearing.
I mean, I'm sorry, we have to, public, close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, if I just, just maybe real quick.
Sure.
Allison, could you briefly, I mean, one or two minutes, explain to the citizens exactly how this is going to work, and this, this doesn't involve Brownsville, it involves the whole valley, and what, what to expect when they get their gas bill?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Basically, what this is, is Texas Gas Service filed for a rate increase, as they're entitled to do statutorily. At the same time, cities are entitled to challenge those increases by filing an intent to, to cease them for ninety days, in which the cities have the right to evaluate and negotiate a lower rate. Along with the other cities in the Rio Grande Valley, we did that, and so the result is we have a, we negotiated down to a fifteen percent increase across the board as opposed to a nineteen percent increase, which was proposed by Texas Gas Service. What this means on the average bill, when you add all of the increases, customer charges, et cetera, together, the average is about a three dollar and fourteen cent increase per bill.
Okay. We did, we, we closed public hearing, but I'm going to suggest that we undo that because we, for that explanation, let me just try to be brief about this. Whenever there's a hike in, in rates through the gas companies, they have to go through the state. They did that, and what happens is we as a city or as a region can oppose it, and so we hired a consultant, and we did hire counsel to oppose it, and eventually figured out all the numbers as they worked their way through the system and came out with a compromise at the end of the day, which they recommended to us because, again, we are not totally familiar with all the, all the different nuances of the rate hikes and all the costs that are involved in there, and so it was, it was recommended to us that this was something, and it's not only here, but it's all up and down the, the entire valley as best as I can recall, and every city has to pass an ordinance confirming that as we go through here. So it's, it's more of a legalese, but because the gas is, is regulated by the state, this is the way they have to go about it, and so that was what we did, and that's what the public hearing is about, and happy to, if anybody's got a comment or knows more than, than I've already explained to you, and if not, we'll go on to the motion to approve this ordinance as we go through here. Yes, sir? You're going to have to recor, I'm, I'm going to have to-
Can you please come up?
Again. If, if you would state your name for the record because it just has to-
My name is Joseph Link, and I've had a, a long career in oil and gas and energy economics, and this is no time to be taking a fifteen percent increase in the price of natural gas. At the wholesale levels throughout Texas, it's being flared.
All right.
We have a new player now in town.
I know.
Five billion-dollar industrial project going on, probably largest industrial project in the history of South Texas, the undersea pipeline, the, the electricity company in Mexico is building, and it should be, have gas pressure by the end of next year. So it's going to be a whole new ballgame for natural gas prices in Brownsville.
And I, Joe, I do know you, it's just so the public knows that I know you. Yes, we understand that, and like I said, I think this is something that's a regulatory thing that actually stems from the state regulatory situation, but we will not, this will be, not be left alone. It's just something that has to be done.
And we're going to revisit it within a year. This is only for a year until we can revisit it.
The only reason I wanted to speak up was to try to get out of any long-term commitments, don't make any long-term deals because things are about to change in Brownsville and the natural gas business.
And thank you for all your efforts, okay?
Thank you.
Anyway, I will now go back to the motion to approve. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Allison. Appreciate it. Okay, item number six, we have public comment.
Next, we have public comment period. Mayor and Commissioners, we did have five citizens that signed up for the public hearing. We will begin first with Mr. Renee Cardenas.
And with all due respect, I please everybody who's coming forward, please state your name for the record so that we can have a, a record, and then our City Secretary will be timing you in accordance with our ordinance for three minutes, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, Renee Cardenas.
Renee, nice to see you.
And good to see you. In the last four months or so, I've been up here a couple of times. One, the city honored my father. The second time I was up here was the swearing-in of Commissioner Gawain and Commissioner Nice, which we grew up together, and Commissioner Mungia. At that time, you all took an oath of moral and ethical conduct. This code needs to be adhered to. We should not be here wasting our time addressing this issue. We should be concerned about what are we doing for the disadvantaged people in this community? What are we doing to create jobs? What are we doing to increase tourism here? And I'm up here as a concerned citizen, and most of y'all know me, and it disheartens me to have to come up here to voice my opinion, my concerns. You know, God forbid something happened to us that happened like yesterday in Las Vegas, but is our city prepared? Are our first responders prepared to handle a situation like that? Those are the questions that we need to be asking ourselves. But because the actions of one Commissioner, we have federal, state, county leaders-
One minute.
We need to work with our navigation district, we need to work with PUB, BISD, we need to work with all our state leaders and everybody to make Brownsville a better place. You need to run this city as a business. Friendship is friendship, business is business, but if we don't take action on this, then we are condoning these actions. Our city manager has dedicated twenty-five years of his life to the city, and it is his job to run the city as a business and to bring you Commissioners proposals and for you to either approve them or disapprove them. It is not your job to run the city.
Time.
As one of our best presidents once said, JFK, ask not what your country can do for you, or what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. The same applies here. It's not what can the city do for you, but what can you do for the city? And it's up to us as citizens in this community to rally around each other and make this a better place. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Eduardo R. Estrada.
My name is Eduardo R. Estrada, I'm from Edinburgh. I'm, I'm here to respectfully ask the Mayor and the Commission to consider passing a resolution for the removal of the historical marker at the Palmetto Ranch Civil War Battlefield addressed to the Texas Historical Commission. Given today's reality and, and our current climate, our cultural climate in this country, I believe the marker is obsolete and offensive to many people, to certain segments of our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Next, we have Mr. Edasmo Castro.
Hi, my name is Edasmo Castro. In a time where our country seems as divided as it ever has been, it is important that we, as a community, continue to strive to be united against racism and sexism. We strongly condemn the recent statements made by one of our Commissioners demeaning and degrading African-Americans, women, and other elected officials. The statements made cannot be tolerated or excused. As public servants, it is important that you all, that we all continue to be role models for our community and represent their interest with the utmost esteem. When we disagree with others, Brownsville expects us to come constructively together to have conversation and dialogue and implement change in a positive way. The statements made are unworthy and unbecoming of an elected official and in no way reflect the culture and the values of the city of Brownsville. Elected officials are in office to represent and be that beacon of light much needed in a culture of darkness and uncertainty. How we wish that our elected officials would implement the same vigor and dedication and influence to truly serve our community as a whole and not a selected few or a special interest. Why not use yours intellect and influence for the greater good? Where are good-paying jobs? Where are the benefits our amazing city employees deserve? Where is the fight for unity and bringing our community together to bring about transparency and accountability? You do not implement either by succumbing to the same. In the recordings that most of the city of Brownsville has heard, references were made in regards to this City Commission offering jobs to friends, this City Commission turning a blind eye, this City Commission plagued by domestic violence, this City Commission being rats-
One minute.
This City Commission doing favors for other groups and other organizations. Commissioner in question made mention in regards to forty thousand dollars paid by an attorney to a client of another attorney, who was actually our city attorney. The recordings, they mentioned offering support for BISD board members in exchange for favors, stating that the city employee, who is also a sitting board member, that he should have changed the grade of a, the daughter of a sitting judge. Some things are shameful, some things should not be tolerated, and consequences must be brought about. It's time for our City Commissioner to step down from our seat and stand with us as a community in order to address every single accusation that was made against members of this Commission, BISD board members-
Time.
-PUB, and even county officials. In a time where our country seems as divided as it has ever been, it is clearly the perfect time for us as a community to be the light upon a hill and show a country that we are truly Brownsvilleians. Thank you all.
Thank you.
[applause] Next, we have Ms. Catalina Perezas.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
How are you doing, Catherine?
To the public, my name is Kathy Perezas Garcia, and I'm here today because, first of all, I'd like to commend, not that I condone the words that were used, and I think you've heard that over and over again, but for me, it takes a great man of great courage to step up to the plate and to own it, and you have done that today. I know that as a former elected official, there's times that when the going gets tough, you just gotta make the right decision, because we all took an oath. At one point in time, you took an oath to serve, to service. You're not the masters, you're our public servants, and that's under Section Code 552 of the Attorney General's Office. Now, we can stand here and bring the office of Inspector General's office, we can go back to the DA, we can do, I think and I feel that every law enforcement has already been contacted in order for us to be able to put closure to the investigation. When an investigation is an inquiry into a specific act or allegations of impropriety or malfeasance, and the obligations of the expenditures, receipts, or use of state, local, or federal funds for into a specific financial transaction, the practice is that it might be involved or implicating our own people. Yes, we're not supposed to micromanage, but it is our responsibility as leaders that you stop corruption. I myself was able to see that in our own school district. They might deny it, they will continue to deny it, but I know that Ms. Longoya will not take me to court, but I know that my colleagues that served with me and I fought very hard, like some of you are, to clear up the mess, but stand strong, do the right thing, abide by the law. And if policy and procedures are broken, what makes you think that the law will not be broken?
One minute.
I ask of all of you to do the right thing. Do what's right and start setting precedents, because we do live in a beautiful city, but because of all this chaos that we have going on, this is a negative, this is a shadow that will be upon all of us. You know, I'm a realtor. It affects our business. It affects all of us. So, please, I had a mentor when I first started, and this is what he said, and he was a great mentor, and he was not even from the state of Texas, but when I got elected, he said, first of all, pray, go with your gut feeling, and look at the facts, and stay with the law. And I leave you all with that. I expect for all of you to do what's right. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Juan Mejia.
My name is Juan Mejia. I'm from Palmito. I'm Texas, very like all these fine people here, and I want to talk to you about the Brownsville Airport on Villamishu. It served its purpose back in 1950, 1960, but it passed the time. Why invest more money on it? We've got, the growth is going north, not south. What do you build for your, for, or, build for the growth is going, which is north? And you're gonna meet for all these people out here, you got all this space there on 511 and 550, where you can build this nice, big airport, you will get all the business from South Patriot Island, Rancho Viejo, North Brownsville, San Benito, Matamoros. You're not gonna, you never get the money back when you invest there, because in old airport, it serves its purpose, like I said, back in 1950, 1960, now it's all gone. So, think about it. Mr. Mayor, you got more degrees than the bomb ter, get with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Juan. Appreciate that. That concludes public comment. Item number seven.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number seven, consideration and action to appoint one member to the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation. This is Mr. Gilbert Salinas, he will present for G P I C.
Mayor, members of the city commission, the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation is a nonprofit that was established in 1992 in accordance with the Texas Development Corporation Act. The composition of the G P I C is a five-member board. Each member of this board is appointed by the city commission to a four-year term, not to exceed two terms. At the moment, the board has had a vacancy since June of this year, which was a position vacated by then-Commissioner Deborah Portillo. During the application process this summer, we had six individuals that applied for the vacant G P I C board position, so we've got six names. Those are Anchor Jensen, Arturo Trevino, Eliseo Davila, Nick Sarafi, Norbert Galaski, and then just this morning, we had, in case it's not in your packets, we had a Mr. Esteban Guerra also apply. At this time, the staff recommends the appointment of one member to the G P I C board. Mayor, members of the city commission, please keep in mind that we are in the process of building the G P I C, both the board as well as the staff. We have some very important decisions to be making very soon.
Mayor, I move to appoint Mr. Esteban Guerra.
Do we have a second? Do we have all a's, or?
I'm sorry.
Does everybody agree?
No, no.
Do we have a na? Do we have a robo for this one?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion and a second for Esteban Guerra. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's two. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm abstaining, because I just, I'm on the board, so.
Am I supposed to abstain if I'm on the board?
Well, you got two, two for and two against, so you got, you got a tie. Any other nominations? Should we table this motion?
I'll move to table it.
And if I may add to that, I think what we could do, Mayor, we've been speaking about, I mean, at one point, once we rebuilt, stepping down, so I think if we tableed it, we could also add for another position at that point, and that way we could.
And I think, I think, I think you've expressed some idea about expanding the board as well, but that would take some time. Anyway, at this particular point, we have a motion to table and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight.
Next, we have action item number eight, consideration and action to receive the commission audit committee audit report regarding the operations of the Fire Department and EMS ambulance services.
Mayor, we adopted the report yesterday. The full committee voted unanimously to submit it, and I've already given a copy to the city secretary, so I would ask that it be adopted and accepted by the city commission. Also, before we vote on that, I'd like to address the public comment of city manager Charlie Kavler, who has stated that I did not give him a chance to have any input, so I'm disputing that statement. And also, I think part of our motion should be to accept his request or put it on the agenda for next time to do an independent audit. I'm okay with that, but I dispute his statement that he had no input, he had various chances, and he chose not.
This is, this is an action item to receive, simply receive the report. Do I have a motion to receive?
I move.
Mayor, if we can, as Commissioner said, in, in the upcoming meeting, I would like to move to have an independent audit made. I believe the city manager did have, did have responses. We do have the review from the audit committee, but it does conflict with that of the audit committee, and I think that, in all fairness, so that we can come to a conclusion that an independent audit should be.
I, I totally agree with having independent auditor, but it's not on the agenda. The only thing that we have on the agenda right now is a.
I move.
Move to receive, simply receive.
I move to receive.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to receive this report, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item is action number nine.
Next item, action number nine, consideration action on resolution number 2017-050 to authorize the filing of an application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for Stormwater Management Project Improvements.
Commissioners, Mayor, my name is David LeCoine, I'm with the Engineering Department here at the city of Brownsville, and I'm also joined by.
Sophie Ordman from the Office of Grant Management.
What we're presenting to you today is an application that we had made with Texas Water Development Board, so about, I want to say the beginning of the year. We did receive priority ranking with the Texas Water Development Board. Out of the entire state of Texas, we were ranked fourth in our application, and what we're bringing you today is what we're actually going for, a full application to be funded, with your approval, of course. We're gonna go through kind of some things that most of you know, and I want to show you a few of the projects that we have on, on this application to better our stormwater system within Brownsville. I'm gonna move really fast, so if you have questions, please stop me. Click, it's not working. Or maybe I'm not gonna move at all. There we go. Okay. So, stormwater concerns, I think we all share in that Brownsville does flood. A couple of key reasons. There it goes. Is our watershed, we are within two watersheds in Brownsville that really affect how our topography works in Brownsville, that creates a lot of flooding. The Rio Grande Valley, the Rio Grande River, as everybody knows, as well as the Laguna Madre watershed, which is outlined in purple. These two things really contribute to why we're so flat in our area, elevation's really low, and we result in flooding, much like what Houston does. There we go. We also have infrastructure deterioration. Much like Houston, we're a pretty old city, and our infrastructure hasn't kept up as we've been growing. So what you kind of can see here is that after about four inches of rain, we start flooding for very, very, for a lot of reasons. Mainly because of our infrastructure decaying, we have pipes that are really filled up, as you can kind of can see there. We also have some pump systems that are in their kind of last legs, as you can kind of see on your right side. So this, of course, leads to flooding, and I'm gonna show you two different cases. A few years back, I want to say between October and May, we had two 40-year floods that were really the highlight of what we started with Commissioner Gawain, of focusing with the city on our stormwater study. And a lot of these pictures, everybody knows. I showed this picture of our first drainage report showing the two storms that we had and why we started flooding at such a mass, really high rate, and it basically showed that we're at a four to six-inch rainfall in those two rainfall events that kind of leveled them into a 40-year rain event. So comparisons always happen, right? So let's compare to Houston. Houston got hit with 50 inches of rain. We got hit with six, and you can kind of see that what we're, we're kind of looking at by comparison to them if we move forward. It almost looks similar. We're very similar to what Houston has, but we only had four inches and they had 50. So that was really what started our big concern of saying, we need to start moving forward. We know that we can get hit with a hurricane, we're way overdue for it, so we need to start preparing for that hurricane. We have, with the city, we have started, this pen pointer's not working with me today. We have started working with, with different projects through funding sources such as C D B G grants, HUD grants, we went out and find B C I C money to do some other projects. A lot of the commission already knows what we've been doing. We've improved some pump systems, we went out and got a stormwater camera so they can do maintenance in our stormwater system and see what's really going on. Just recently, we started investing into sensors, which I came brought to the commission last month, showing that we can finally award and start getting exactly hard data beyond what the weather service has given us, have our own data set to start saying what's really going on within our city and within our canals. We implemented different softwares, we're rebuilding Hope Park, which is in the downtown area, which is gonna have an air of effect of everything from Palm Boulevard back into downtown, which is gonna be a major, major improvement on our flooding in the downtown area, but this was just the beginning of it. We, we still have to go find out bigger, find bigger pots of money. As you all know, we're all strapped for money, especially when it comes to these really large improvement projects, and that's kind of where we started working with the Texas Water Development Board.
Hi, good afternoon. The Office of Grant Management and Community Development strives to align its work and efforts to meet the needs of the community and priorities of the city. As David has mentioned, stormwater management and flood mitigation projects are imperative to the quality of life of our community. In January 2017, city staff from the Office of Grant Management and Engineering Department had the opportunity to attend the 2017 Water for Texas Conference hosted by the Texas Water Development Board. This conference highlighted scientific, planning, and financial solutions to today's critical water challenges. Panelists and workshops shared the latest data related to water issues experienced throughout the state of Texas, and city of Brownsville staff had the invaluable opportunity to network with industry leaders, elected officials, and Texas Water Development Board members. Attendees were also able to learn about varying financial assistance programs provided for water-related projects. After further research, it was found that the best-suited financial assistance program that addresses both city and Texas Water Development Board needs is the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund program provides low-cost financing for water projects. Eligible projects that can apply for funding include the planning, design, acquisition, and construction of wastewater, stormwater, reuse, and other water pollution control work. The program is competitive and offers a wide variety of benefits, such as below-market fixed interest rates, up to 30-year repayment periods, and principal forgiveness for qualifying disadvantaged communities that is offered on a competitive basis. City of Brownsville staff has strategized city projects that would best align with the funding priorities of the Development Board. The application will request $5 million in financing for a variety of stormwater projects that David will explain shortly. The city has been approved for up to 30% in principal forgiveness due to its economic characteristics, but because principal forgiveness is on a competitive basis, we will not find out a definite forgiveness amount until after the Water Development Board has received and reviewed all applications. It is important to note that the application we are submitting is non-binding, therefore we are allowed to cancel our financing request at any time. Now, David will be discussing the stormwater management projects that we are proposing in our application. These projects will facilitate community resiliency through implementing strategic improvements.
Thank you. So the projects that we're looking at. A couple of these projects we have highlighted before the drainage, at the drainage reports, and that's why we're kind of re-bringing them back in, saying now that there's an opportunity for the funding to be there, we really would like to put these first. And the first one we're gonna look at is the Waterplane Park that we're looking at at Four Corners. Four Corners, we all historically know that Four Corners floods. This will be one of the first steps that, or second step, actually, because the first step was when we did the South Coast Bike and Hydro, we put a covert in there to kind of remove it, isolate it from its flooding issues. The next step is to find a place to put all that water. So this is a new concept that we took over from Rotterdam, actually, our Parks Director brought it up years ago, and he said, okay, eventually we're gonna try to get this in. Now, we did shift it a bit. What they did overseas was that they put it in an urban area. What we're proposing to do here is put it in more of a park setting where we can start working, we can have a little bit more than what we've seen like at Falk Elementary, where we have the same type of concept. We're actually developing the park system. And what you don't see underneath it is the connection between each one of the detention ponds is actually underground detention pipes, so we have more storage for water. What this does, it's green infrastructure, and we've actually gone to a few conferences just recently where other cities are really trying to get a park like this. We've talked, heard it from Houston, we've heard it from New Orleans, we've heard it from some, actually, Washington as well, but they're still at the concept stage. We actually have some designs and some, some land that we can do it with and be one of the first cities in the country to do this type of park that kind of marries engineering, green infrastructure, low-impact development, and improve our parks. The second big, large project, the very easy one to sell, is Palm Boulevard. Palm Boulevard, in this stretch that we have outlined in yellow, floods, as we can all attest to in the last storms. This is gonna be the first step to trying to reverse some of that flow that's where that water's standing and get it to those new pump systems that we have in the downtown area. So I kind of equate it to this. We have a straw that's underneath Palm Boulevard, and we have a lot of little straws penetrating on each side of it, and that's just from growth. That's from utilities punching through. We've grown since they put, they first put the stormwater infrastructure in, and it's just time to increase the size of that straw to bring more water in and to get the flooding out of this area of Brownsville. The next two projects, there we go. This is West Brownsville. It's right around West 18th Street and Elizabeth. What we're proposing is to get water faster for this area, instead of where it normally travels, this flow line goes up 281 around and it comes back down into our pumps. We're trying to bypass all of that and go straight into our pump system, which you can kind of see at the end of the blue outline. We're trying to bypass that to get water out. I mean, at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do. We're utilizing the system that we already have and improving it. It just, sometimes it costs quite a bit of money. The next portion is that we're gonna start doing some improvements on our weir structures that have been just completely decayed over the past, um, thirty, forty years. A lot of people don't understand that behind the Lone Star Bank syst- old Lone Star Bank is a weir structure that controls a lot of the water that flows from the expressway down into our Saca de Lagueta system. So, we, we need to repair it, and it's just, one of those that it just takes a lot of money, 'cause you're basically gonna do a bypass, you're gonna stop water from all the, both, um, both directions just to do a repair. These are the projects that we're proposing. It's with the first five million dollars that we're going for or going after with this loan. It's a very low interest rate. I believe they were quoted at being a zero-point-nine-five percent, including some subsidies that could be offered within the span of the lo- the loan. It is a lot of money, we understand that, but these projects need to be done, so we don't kind of fall into that issue of what Houston did. Now, understand, don't get me wrong, this does not fix all the flooding in Brownsville. If you see a storm that comes like Houston, there's no amount of engineering we can do to prepare for that. That is just one of those one-in-a-thousand chances of happening. We're trying to mitigate, we're trying to get floodwaters out faster, so that we can recover faster. Any questions?
I really liked the park at Four Corners. Was there a specific piece of property that you see that happening?
A little bit louder, I'm sorry.
I really liked the park that you designed for Four Corners.
Thank you.
Was there a specific area that you see that happening? Like, do you already have the piece of property picked out?
Yes, actually, the, the site that we designed it for is right off the Southmost Bike and Hike Trail, which the city already owns property.
And is that one that's like sunken in and the water goes into?
That is correct.
Oh, that's really cool.
That is correct.
I just hope we don't have people complaining that the park flooded.
Right. So, that, that is what it's supposed to do by design. We did the bigger ones, the soccer fields, um, which is gonna be the largest one. We're trying to play if we can fit in an official-sized soccer field, but right now, we're kinda going with the speed soccer field, being as the first line of defense. After that, it'll jump down to basketball courts and eventually to a splash pad.
That is really cool.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
This is, this is a great project, and I, I urge you guys to also look at, there is a potential Grants Through Resilient Cities, I believe is the name of the, uh, you know, we actually, at one point, uh, we're talking to the Dutch engineers, like, you know, nobody knows more about flooding than, than Holland. And so, they're the experts, and they say, uh, learn how to love the water, 'cause the water loves you. So, anyway, this is an action item. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Great presentation. Keep it good work.
This is one of our citizens' big concerns, well, flooding.
Item number ten?
Action item number ten, consideration and action to award a five-year contract to a local CPA firm to audit the city's financial records for fiscal years twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. City of Brownsville advertised for requests for statements of qualifications from a public accounting firm to perform the city's financial and compliance audit. Legal advertising was made June, June twenty-fifth and July second. Statement of qualifications were received on subject project on Thursday, July thirteenth. Five, uh, five responses were received. The, the qualifications were submitted to the Evaluation Committee. Evaluation Committee met several times, uh, they graded the qualifications, they graded the highest-ranking firm. Purchasing and they, uh, made contact with the vendor and requested a best and final offer for the, for their, for their services. Purchasing made a, um... Purchasing performed a further study on the pricing that was submitted and found that the, that it was within market price. The best and final offers, best and final offers price submitted was then accepted at eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. We're requesting an awarded contract for the performance of the city financial and compliance audit of the City of Brownsville to CRRI, Carl Riggs, and Ingram, City of Brownsville, for stipulated service and price. Part of the word of the contract will, will commence and shall expire August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Again, we have an action item. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number eleven, consideration and action to approve to observe Cesar Chavez Day on Monday, April second, twenty-eighteen.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and City Commission, my name is Josh Betis, I'm the Assistant HR Director. I'm here to request in this evening for your consideration and action to allow, uh, non-civil service employees to observe Cesar Chavez Day on Monday, April second, twenty-eighteen. As you may know, uh, Friday, March thirtieth, we'll be observing Good Friday, and we're asking for your approval to allow these employees to observe Cesar Chavez Day on April second.
That sounds like a pointe. Anyway. Go ahead, a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Enjoy.
Thank you. Enjoy your long week.
Item number twelve.
Action item number twelve, consideration and action to relocate the Jefferson Davis Highway Memorial.
I'll start off with this.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering, and the people who put this on the agenda, would you all have any appetite for trying to have a public, uh, hearing outside of the City Commission, uh, for a town hall-type situation?
I was hoping to, uh, suggest a committee with maybe the Brownsville Historical Association, Parks, and, uh, other interested, uh, stakeholders in this thing, uh, but if you wanna have a workshop, is that what you're?
A, a type of workshop, so that we can have people to express their opinion. This is not a public hearing, so we don't really have the, be able to have a voice in here, uh, other than discussion on a motion, but I think, I think it's healthy that we allow people to visit on this, on this issue, uh, and try to get some sort of consensus, if that's possible.
I think we should.
Okay.
On the table?
Okay, well, let's, let's move to have a workshop.
Well, I, I think you have to table it and, you know, 'cause we don't-
Call another?
Yeah, then, then you guys, I, I will instruct you guys to have a, a town hall meeting, you know, at my request, okay? Uh, if there's a motion to table, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Thank you, everybody, for coming.